And that the aide on their way out happened to grab the certificate. Hi, everybody. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It's January sixth, 2021, our first meeting of the new year, and as always with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and justice for all. Madam Chair, I will define the remote meeting if you do not have a forum present.
Okay. The town manager just needs to read a statement before we get started.
The Chair of the Town Council, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis, in accordance with the Governor's emergency order number twelve pursuant to Executive Order twenty 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 dash zero four, has determined that the Town Council is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical physical location, there is a physical location to listen to, observe, and to listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that, A, we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We're using utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the council have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through the Zoom platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number, one six four six five five eight eight six five six, with the access code nine one one seven zero two five seven two seven, by clicking on the following web address, www.nuemarket.nh.gov. It is also being streamed live on the town website and channel. We are providing public notice of necessary information for access to the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom and instructions provided on the town of Newmarket's website at www.nuemarket.nh.gov. And we're providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please call six zero three six five nine three six zero one seven, extension one three two one. And we'll be adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled. Please note that all votes taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. Madam Chair, if you could call the roll and ask those members not in attendance if they are alone in their room.
I will do that. Counselor Burns?
I am present and alone.
Thank you. Counselor Sanders?
I am present and alone.
Counselor Braybeck?
I'm present and alone.
Counselor Blackstone?
Present and alone.
And Counselor Kiper?
Present and alone.
Thank you.
We'd just like to remind councils who aren't present to mute the Zooms during the meeting and also to request to speak. On top of your packet, your electronic agenda, there's a request to speak button and the Chair will recognize you.
Thank you. So we'll move on with our agenda. The first item is public forum. Sorry. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak this evening? I am seeing none. So I will close the public forum at seven oh five. The next item that we have is for the Town Council to accept the minutes, and we have minutes from December sixteenth, our regular meeting minutes, and I would accept a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting on December sixteenth, 2020.
I'll second that motion.
Are there any questions or changes, corrections? I am seeing none, so if you could call the roll, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Kim.
We hear you.
They can't hear you.
Kim. Wendy, they can't hear us. Try it again.
Counsel Blackstone?
Aye.
Counsel Braybeck?
Aye.
Counsel Kiper?
Aye.
Counsel Burns?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein? Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. And next we have the town manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a COVID-19 update. As of January fifth, we have thirty-six cases, active cases, or zero point three percent of the population, and we've had two hundred seventy-nine cumulative cases since the beginning of the pandemic, or three percent of the town's population. Over the last fourteen days, we've had sixty-nine cumulative cases, and four hundred, four thousand four hundred fourteen PCR tests have been issued, and people have been tested, well, forty-seven percent of the town's population has been tested. Of the two hundred seventy-nine cases that we've had, thirty-seven are associated with an institutional, usually senior care setting. I did want to give an update on the vaccination as well. When I was writing my report last time on December sixteenth, no vaccine had yet to be approved when I was writing it. As of this writing, many of the first respondents, emergency response teams, had received their first inoculation of the vaccine. For fire, seventy-four percent of the department has been, and sixty-three percent of the police department have received or are scheduled for their first inoculation. With that being said, we have received the phase plan on how people will be getting their vaccination. First, I've been getting some emails or phone calls requesting a vaccination from the town. We are not distributing the vaccination at this point in time. That's gonna be determined by the state. My suggestion would be calling your healthcare provider to determine what's the best phase. As of yesterday, the new phases are the Phase One A, which is about a hundred thousand people, the high-risk health workers, first responders, and older adults living in residential care settings. Phase One B, which should be starting shortly, is of two hundred twenty-five thousand people in the state. They're people over the age of seventy-five, the medically vulnerable at significantly higher risk, where two or more of the same conditions, and family caregivers are those who are medically vulnerable persons, under sixteen years old are not eligible for the vaccine. Phase One B also includes residents and staffs of residential facilities for persons with intellectuals and developmental disabilities, correction officers and staff working in correctional facilities, and first responders and health workers not already vaccinated. This should be completed between December and March. Phase Two, which should be completed in March and May, the first two hundred seventy-five thousand people in Phase Two A are people between the ages of sixty-five and seventy-four, and K through twelve school and childcare staff. Phase Two B, which is two hundred thousand people, people between the ages of fifty and sixty-five years old, and as of right now, after May, would begin Phase Three, which is the first phase of Three A is three hundred twenty-five thousand people, which are medically vulnerable people under the age of fifty, at moderately higher risk, and one or more of conditions that we, the DHHS has put out. And Phase Three B is three hundred twenty-five thousand people, everyone else who hasn't already been vaccinated. This is based, estimated on the vaccine doses allocated to the state of New Hampshire from the federal government in vaccine uptake. So it could go faster if more vaccines are approved, or this is being done quicker, or more, and more is being made. But again, my suggestion is contact your healthcare provider when that time comes. We are working with our local public health network to begin rolling out Phase One B and educating those included in that group with the ability to get the vaccine. They are contacting the Newmarket Senior Center to help with that information. On the agenda this evening is a resolution asking to approve using the one-time optional town meeting. I am asking the council to suspend the rules, to act, their rules this evening, to act on this. The following are the guidelines. Basically, the Town Council, instead of having a deliberative session, will be holding two live virtual meetings to inform the voters about the proposed optional meeting procedures, and discuss warrant articles and finalize the contact. The first meeting would be held on January twenty-seventh at seven PM, and residents may watch on local channel thirteen or via Zoom. And during the first section, the Town Council review the warrant, explain the articles. There is no comment from the public during this. It's just council discussion. After the session, the public may comment by emailing townmeeting@newmarketnh.gov, by sending us mail, by calling us on the telephone at six five nine three six one seven, extension one three zero one, and they can also drop off comments at Town Hall. Before this, all of these rules are gonna be mailed to every registered voter in the town. That's why we're asking you to suspend the rules so we can get the information out. So after we receive, all comments must include their name and address, and comments must be submitted by February second at noon. The second meeting would be held on February second at seven PM. Residents, again, may watch on local channel thirteen or via Zoom. At this time, the council will review all comments submitted and deliberate any changes suggested by these comments. The council will then finalize the warrant. On March ninth, the town will hold its regular municipal election here at Town Hall from seven AM to seven PM. We encourage those who do not feel safe voting in person to file for an absentee ballot from the town clerk as soon as possible. You may call the office at six oh three six five nine three six one seven, extension four zero seven zero. Please use disability as the reason for requesting an absentee ballot. In addition, we'll be reserving parking spaces for drive-through voting at Town Hall. This will allow people to come to Town Hall, call, and someone will bring out a ballot to all the people to vote in safety of their own vehicle. After the election of officers and a bond issue that we have, the first question would be to see if the voters approve the optional town meeting procedures. If this question does not approve, then except for the election of officers, all other questions will not pass. I've been working with the superintendent of schools to have this done for both entities, so we're not mixing. The only reason why we need to do this is we wanna make sure we can hold, we don't feel we have a place that we could hold deliberative session to continue with social distancing. Some communities are having them, but requiring mask-wearing during the entire meeting. The only issue there would be, if somebody doesn't wanna wear the mask, what do we do? Deliberative session. So that's the, therein lies the issue. This is a one-time bill that sunsets in, I believe, September, that the legislature passed last year. Just a reminder that we're gonna have a special Town Council public hearing on January nineteenth for the New Road Bond, and this is gonna be virtually at seven PM. And just an update, we have been moving forward with the, sorry, the hiring of a new facilities director. We interviewed five individuals this week, and we should have more information shortly on the final candidate. Finally, in some return of normalcy, we have begun meeting, we, local sports, to have the return of the Great Bay Half Marathon in five K in April. It'll look very different with staggered start times, but we hope we'll be able to work together to have this event returned. One other item that we have, that if Main Street's gonna be closed for this event, that we could encourage businesses to have socially distance outdoor dining for that one day, to help them after a long winter. And that is all I have tonight, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Counsel Dumas?
Actually, you can cancel that, Steve, and answer the question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for the town manager? I am seeing none, but I have a couple. With, for, I know that we're gonna discuss this when we talk about the resolution, but it says, please, please use disability as a reason for requesting an absentee ballot, and, and I know that that was changed with the last election, and you were able to, there was a checkbox for COVID.
It was just for the general election.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify that. And then the other question that I had was, with the coordination with the school district, do, do we have to duplicate the mailing? Like, how does that work?
My, we're asking them to get it done quickly, so we could try to save money by having the same, using the same mailing, if they have different rules than we do. But they shouldn't have different rules.
Okay.
But we have to send out two sets of rules.
Oh, okay.
Because they're gonna have their own meeting.
Different rules.
We have our own meeting, but if we could do it in one.
In one mailing?
Mailing, that'd be cheaper.
And does the cost come to us for this, or will we be reimbursed from the state?
We are not, there is no money for reimbursement for town meetings.
Okay. I think I had one other question, but I don't remember, I didn't write it down. That's all I have. Counsel Dumas?
I did have another one that just popped up. Steve, you had mentioned drive-through voting. Somebody calls and says, hey, I'm outside my car, I'd like to cast a ballot. How is that gonna look in terms of validating that they're on the list and everything? Is it, are you gonna have a station outside that somebody can verify, or you're gonna have them run up with?
They're gonna have to run up and do it.
Okay.
We're not anticipating a lot of those, so.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, moving on. Committee reports. Are there any committee reports since we last met? Counsel Dumas?
The Budget Committee met on Monday and unanimously accepted the school board's budget, to recommend going forward to voters. There were a few questions that they had had for the town manager. Those have been emailed off, and we should be good. I don't believe we're meeting next Monday. There should be one coming up, I believe, towards the end of January, though.
Okay. I'm not seeing any others. The Energy and Environment Committee met last night, actually, and the bulk of the work is that there, the committee is working on a resolution to, a resolution to suggest to the Town Council, and suggest that we pass, that would commit Newmarket to renewable sources, and that would be for the town, renewable sources of energy, of electricity by 2030 and fuel by 2050, and that would be for the town, municipality, residential, and businesses. So we'll be seeing that probably in the next month or so, once they get that finalized. And that's all I had. I'm not seeing any other committee reports, so, moving on. We have two resolutions in the second reading, and the first is Resolution twenty twenty, sorry, twenty twenty-one dash twenty, and that's the increasing the elderly exemption, and I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty, increasing the elderly exemption.
I'll second that.
Please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for background, state law allows municipalities to provide people over the age of sixty-five an exemption on the value of their properties if they qualify by having income and assets, excluding the value of their home and two acres, below a certain level. Typically, during revaluation years, we review these limits. I think right after we did the revaluation, we got hit with the pandemic and this got delayed. In Newmarket, the current levels, levels are, if you're between the age of sixty-five and seventy-four, the exemption amount's a hundred thousand dollars off your property. Your income can't be higher than thirty-five thousand dollars if you're single, and your asset limits cannot be higher than a hundred fifty thousand dollars if you're single. If you're between the ages of seventy-five and seventy-nine, they exempt a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Married, the income level is fifty thousand dollars, and asset limits is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Married as well. In eighty-plus, they take out the income and asset limits. You're allowed to have a hundred fifty thousand dollar exemption from the value of your property. Currently, we have nineteen individuals receiving the exemption between sixty-five and seventy-four, eleven between seventy-five and seventy-nine, and twenty-one over the age of eighty. The impacts of the tax evaluation of town is reduced by reducing it to, in four hundred and seventy-five thou, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. This requires an additional one hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred and eighty dollars to be made up by other taxpayers, or about seventeen cents on the overall tax bill. We did a comparison on other communities and make a recommendation to change some of the amounts. We were recommending that the exemption be increased to the following, sorry, one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for sixty-five to seventy-four, seventy-five thousand to seventy-nine thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand, seventy-five to seventy-nine, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and eighty-plus, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. For income limits, we're comparative to the other surrounding communities. We're not recommending, recommended increasing it at this time. We're slightly lower on our asset limits. To qualify for the exemption, you must also have assets less than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We could increase this to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We do not know the impact, since this, we only have asset, we don't, only have asset records on those who currently qualify. We'd have to wait to see the number of people who now qualify to see the impact. By increasing the exemption to these levels would increase the amount, to be exempted the valuation from six point four million to seven point seven million dollars. Currently, we make up a hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred and eight dollars in taxes. We'd actually have to make up now a hundred and ninety-six, forty-two dollars, or additional thirty-two thousand dollars. This would be, again, spread around other taxpayers. If we were, if we were to increase the exemption amount, a person over the age of eighty with a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home would see their tax bill go from five thousand ninety-two dollars to four thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars, or savings of six hundred and thirty-six dollars annually. But I do recommend changing the exemption limits.
Counsel Dumas?
I just had a quick question, Steve. I'm hoping you can help me understand this. When we, when somebody meets this tax exemption that we offer, does that also apply towards when they get billed for the school tax side of things as well?
It is, it's the entire bill.
Okay, so it's everything?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'm seeing none. I'm just gonna, I think that it's important that we review this on a regular basis, and, you know, it's not as high as some of the other communities, but I think that it's, it's what we are able to do at this point, and I think it's important that we pass it. So I'm seeing no other comments, so if you could call the roll, please. Counsel Dumas? Counsel Sanders?
Aye.
Counsel Blackstone? Counsel Blackstone?
Aye.
Counsel Braybeck?
Aye.
Counsel Kiper?
Aye.
Counsel Burns?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. And the next item that we have is Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three, approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two default budget.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three, approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two default budget.
I'll make, I'll accept that. Second that. I'm sorry.
Town manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pursuant to state law, the Town Council has to provide a default budget. In case a proposed budget does not pass at the town meeting, the Director of Finance Administration and I prepared the default budget. If the budget were to fail, we'd have to reduce the proposed budget by two hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. However, this would still be an increase of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand four hundred and twelve dollars over the previous obligations, and we recommend passage of this resolution.
Are there any questions or comments for the town manager? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please. Counsel Dumas?
Aye.
Counsel Sanders?
Aye.
Counsel Blackstone?
You muted Counsel Blackstone.
Aye.
Counsel Braybeck?
Aye.
Counsel Kiper?
Aye.
Counsel Burns?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Next, we have some nominations and appointments to consider, and we have three tonight. The first is for Warren Bash to be on the, on the Parking Committee, with a term to expire December twenty twenty-three, and I would accept a motion to approve that application.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for Warren Bash for the Parking Committee with a term expiring December twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that motion.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please. Counsel Dumas?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Counsel Blackstone?
Aye.
Counsel Braybeck?
Aye.
Counsel Kiper?
Aye.
Counsel Burns?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. The next is for William Barr, and that is also to be, to serve on the Parking Committee with a three-year term, so I'm assuming December twenty twenty twenty-three.
Is he doing this from Washington, DC?
I, I saw that name, and I, and I first thought maybe it was a typo, but.
I will make a motion for William Barr to, for the position as a member of the Parking Committee, for a three-year term expiring December twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please. Counsel Dumas?
Aye.
Counsel Sanders?
Aye.
Counsel Blackstone?
Aye.
Counsel Braybeck?
Aye.
Counsel Kiper?
Aye.
Counsel Burns?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Motion passes seven zero. And then lastly, we have Melissa Brogel, who would, is applying for an alternate position, an alternate position on the Conservation Commission with a term to expire April 2023, and I would accept a motion to approve that application.
I will make a motion to approve Melissa Brogel for an alternate position on the Conservation Commission with the term expiring April of 2023.
I will second that.
And I, by no means wish to put you on the spot, but I did notice that Melissa is present with us, and so I just, I don't know if you want to say anything. I'll give you that opportunity now.
Just thank you for looking my application over. I've been looking for an opening on the Conservation Commission for a while, and the alternate popped up, so I thought I would give it a shot. I've lived in Newmarket for about seven years, and I live right downtown, and I'm just, you know, looking to get more involved other than just hiking the Conservation Commission properties, so I'm excited.
That's fantastic.
And I'm willing to answer questions, too, if anybody has any questions. Sorry.
Oh, great. They do a lot of good work on the Conservation Commission, so I really appreciate you putting your name in and getting involved. So, did anyone have any questions for Melissa? I am seeing none and no other comments. So again, thank you, and if you could call the roll, please.
Aye.
Council Sanders?
Aye.
Council Blackstone?
Aye.
Council Braybeck?
Aye.
Council Kiper?
Aye.
Council Burns?
Aye.
Council Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Okay, so then we have resolutions in the first reading. We have three this evening, and the first is Resolution 2020, 2021 dash 25. It's a resolution related, relating to authorizing the town manager to enter into an agreement for audit services for fiscal years 2021 through 2023 with three one-year options. Whereas the town of Newmarket solicited forbid proposals for audit services, and whereas three qualified firms submitted proposals. And whereas, after evaluating the proposals and acquiring answers to follow-up questions, the Director of Finance and Administration recommends the proposal submitted by Plotsick and Sanderson, and Sanderson, PA. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that it approves the town manager to enter into an agreement with Plotsick and Sanderson, PA. First reading, January 6th, 2021. The next item, I was really excited to see this one, on our agenda is Resolution 2020, 2021 dash 26, Splash Pad and Restroom Facility Installation and Build on Leo Landrosch Field. Whereas the Recreation Department seeks the town to authorize proceeding with the Splash Pad project to be built at Leo Landrosch Field, proposed by New England Recreation Group of 203 Southwest Cut Off Northborough, Mass. in the amount of $231,612. Whereas the Recreation Department seeks the town to authorize to proceed earmarking the remaining budgeted balance of $128,502 to complete the restroom facility, and all costs associated with this portion of the project to be done in-house, acting as general contractor. Whereas the Recreation Department is requesting $305,396 from their rec fund balance of $542,532. Whereas the Recreation Department is requesting $35,772 from their capital reserve balance of $205,823. Whereas the Recreation Department is requesting $17,355 from their impact fee balance of $29,593. Whereas the Recreation Department is now seeking to withdraw a total of $360,114 from those recreation accounts in the amounts listed above in order to complete the Splash Pad and restroom facility project, which will then be reimbursed up to $199,407, which is a 50% match, from the total $398,814 grant budget from NHDNCR. What does that stand for?
Department of Natural Cultural.
Okay.
Used to be dread.
Upon receipts of all expenditures. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Newmarket Town Council does hereby approve the withdrawal of funds not to exceed $360,114 from Newmarket Recreation Department's fund balance, capital reserve, and impact fees instead above amounts for the purpose of building the Splash Pad and public restroom facility on Leo Landrosch Field, and the town to authorize the town manager to execute any contracts, change orders, and agreements associated with this project. Therefore, be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council. That, that was just extra. First reading, January 6th, 2021. There's a lot of numbers in that one. And the next resolution that we have is Resolution 2020, 2021 dash 27, Approving the Optional Town Meeting Guidelines for Town Meeting 2021. And I know that we did just discuss this, but where it's the first reading, I feel like I should read it in full. Whereas the COVID-19 pandemic continues to impact the town of Newmarket, and whereas, due to distancing guidelines, the town council has determined it is not practical to hold a deliberative session in person. And whereas, the New Hampshire Legislature approved House Bill 1129 allowing for an optional town meeting for March 2021. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the Newmarket Town Council does approve the use of the optional town meeting guidelines as follows. One, a copy of these rules will be sent to all registered voters of the town. Two, the town council will hold two informational sessions. Three, the first meeting will be held on January 27th at 7:00 PM. Residents may watch on local channel 13 or via Zoom, and the web address, or by calling 1-646-558-8656, and the meeting ID number is also there. During the first session, the town council will review the warrant and explain the articles. After this session, the public may comment on the articles by email at townmeeting@newmarketnh.gov, mail town meeting comments at 186 Main Street, Newmarket, New Hampshire, or by phone, 603-659-6317, extension 1301. And they may drop off comments at Town Hall in the Dropbox on the side of the building. All comments must include your name and address. Comments must be submitted by February 2nd at noon. Number four, the second meeting will be held on February 2nd at 7:00 PM. Residents may watch on local channel 13 or via Zoom, or by calling into the meeting. At this time, the town council will review all comments submitted and deliberate any changes suggested by these comments. The council will then finalize the warrant. Five, on March 9, the town will hold its regular municipal election at Town Hall from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. We would encourage those who do not feel safe voting in person to file for an absentee ballot from the town clerk as soon as possible. They may call that office at 603-659-6317, extension 1301. Please use disability as the reason for requesting an absentee ballot. In addition, we will be reserving parking spaces for drive-through voting at Town Hall. This will allow people to come to Town Hall, call, and someone will bring out a ballot to all people to vote in the safety of their own vehicle. Six, after the election of officers and a bond issue, the first question will be to see if the voters approve of the optional town meeting procedures. If this question is not proved, approved, then except for the election of officers, all other questions will not pass. First reading, January 6th, 2021.
Madam Chair, may I ask the councils to suspend the rules to act on it this evening?
I would accept a motion to suspend the rules to act on this resolution.
I will make a motion to suspend the rule, suspend the rules so that we can act on Resolution 2020, 2021 dash 27.
I'll second that motion.
Any questions or comments about the suspension of rules? Seeing none, if you could call the roll. Council Duma?
Aye.
Council Sanders?
Aye.
Council Blackstone?
Aye.
Council Braybeck?
Aye.
Council Kiper?
Aye.
Aye.
Council Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. So I, yeah. I'll accept a motion to approve Resolution 2020, 2021 dash 27, Approving the Optional Town Meeting Guidelines for Town Meeting 2021.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution 2020, 2021 dash 27, Approving Optional Town Meeting Guidelines for Town Meeting 2021.
I'll second that motion.
Are there any questions or comments? Or did you want to, sorry?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what I said. This is not, not a, it's not something we want to do. It's not something that we look forward to. We just want to protect the safety of the residents. The problem is, we're seeing the surge in the numbers now. You know, we saw the surge after Thanksgiving. Now we're going to see another surge because of the Christmas holidays and a number of cases. We just, we can't find a place that has enough room to have social distancing and allowing people to take their masks off. To the point where we were throwing out ideas before we knew this there, to renting the Whitemore Center to try to do something. Because we can't control the number of people who would want to attend a deliberative session. I mean, to be honest, in the last, since I've been here in eight years, I think that session may have attracted as many as 20 people who weren't resident, who weren't employees, more likely than not, two. But we have to be prepared in case we were to attract a large crowd for this. So that's the reason why we did this. This is a one-time deal. After this, we'd go back to normal SB2 procedures. I did work with the, since this is so new and everything is so fluid, the town attorney worked with the head of elections for the Attorney General's Office, as well as the attorney for the Secretary of State's Office to come up with these guidelines to make sure we were following it correctly. And the other interesting thing is, I was trying to write the warrant, DRA is not giving any guidance on any of these, so we're flying kind of blind there. The next wrench is that we have to get the bond counsel on board since we have a bond issue on this one. So we're having him, we're having him talk to the town attorney to make sure, to explain where we are with everything. So this has not been an easy task to go through, and this is where we are. And again, it's not something we wanted to do, but again, we're worried about the safety of the residents.
Are there any questions? I'm not seeing any. I would say that it's fairly straightforward, but it's not.
Yeah.
It's a, it's quite a process that we need to follow. My question, I'm curious if you know of other municipalities that will be following these guidelines?
I believe the town of Conway did it because they had a Maytown meeting. So they were after the pandemic. So they, they did it this way. They did a full drive-through election. They didn't even offer a chance for people to go inside. We determined, we're like, wait a minute. We proved that we could have an indoor election from the primary and the presidential, that we could do that, but they still have the requirement in the bill to have a drive-through option. That's why we're reserving two parking spaces. We got that cleared by the AGs and Secretary of State's Office. Because at first, we're like, oh, we just won't have the drive-through portion. And they said, no, you still have to have it, even though it's in the bill. And they, they understand, but the problem is, we need to get these things done quickly, and the legislature just got back in the session today. So we, we don't know what bills are going to be tried to be passed between now and then, but we're running out of time, so.
What happens if they chain, if they, if they do pass something that negates this? I mean, is that a possibility?
I don't believe so because it's already in place while we were doing this. I think we'd have a great lawsuit if we did, but yeah, no, this is what we have on the, as the law on the books as we're doing this, so that would be the one that stands.
Are there any other questions? I am seeing none, so if you could call the roll, please. Council Duma?
Aye.
Council Sanders?
Aye.
Council Blackstone?
Aye.
Council Braybeck?
Aye.
Council Kiper?
Aye.
Council Burns?
Aye.
Council Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. I can't wait until everything goes back to normal. The next is corresponded to the town council.
We have a letter.
We have a letter. It's exciting.
Would you like me to read it?
Sure, if you.
I've got it.
Please.
"December 22nd, 2020. Dear Chair Weinstein, Please be advised that at the Planning Board meeting on December 8th, 2020, the Board unanimously voted to send this letter to the Town Council. Ask for its review and comment to rescind water and sewer impact fees to be replaced with water and sewer system development charges. This is based on the Board's investigations and position that a change in methodality will provide much flexibility in dealing with the capital cost of water and sewer systems for those who seek to connect to the system. Upon discussing this change with Attorney John Ratigan, it has been determined that in order to implement this change, there are few changes to Section 32 dash 238 of the zoning ordinance, impact fees, that are necessary. While the ordinance doesn't specify the four categories for which impact fees are to be charged, there are two paragraphs which specifically reference impact fees for water and sewer. See yellow highlighted section of the ordinance attached. Those references need to be deleted to avoid confusion in the future. The Planning Board will be holding a public hearing on those changes on January 2021, and will formally forward those zoning changes along with the recommendation to the Town Council in accordance with Section 24, Planning and Development of the Town's Municipal Code, Section 24 dash 1, Zoning Ordinance Amendment Procedures. Meanwhile, the Town Planner Diane Hardy will be working with Mr. Ratigan and putting together the ordinance for the Town Council to make those changes to the zoning ordinance. However, rescinding the impact fee should take place at the same time the Town Council adopts a new system of water and sewer development charges, which would be in the realm of the town administration and the Water and Wastewater Department to develop the Town Council's approval consistent with your usual water and sewer ordinances. Please feel free to contact Diane Hardy if you have any questions.
Please feel free to contact Diane Hardy if you have any questions. Sincerely, Eric Bottomen, Chairman, Newmarket Planning Board. Um, we're gonna, I'm gonna forward this to Water and Sewer and have them begin working on the um, necessary changes, so we don't go without impact, well, system charges.
Right, cause we wanna make sure that we're doing that at the same time and they're, and they're gonna, if I remember right, um, so they're having the public hearing in January, as it said, and so it should be happening in February.
We can hold the ordinances. You don't need to act on it right away.
Oh, right, cause they'll pass it and then, and then send it to us, and so we get, we'll have it.
We can, we'll have it. We can keep it in a drawer until we're ready.
Great. And um, uh, are there, was this in, for closing comments?
Uh, no.
Or no? Okay, please, uh, Council Dumont.
Um, Steve, I wanted to ask, uh, when the Town Council asked the Planning Board to, to look into the impact fees, did we ask just for the, the water and sewer systems or did we ask for all of them?
All of them.
And they're only targeting these specifically?
As of right now, yep.
Was there any explanation or elaboration as to why these two in particular and not the others?
I don't know.
There was, and I just don't recall exactly what it was.
Okay. I'm not complaining about these. I was just curious.
Yeah, there, there's, they're structured differently and um, I just don't recall exactly
All right.
what the differences were. But there is a reason why. It was water and sewer and then, and then the um, school and recreation.
I, I'm very happy to see it. I was just curious to know if there is a, but thank you.
And then are there any closing comments um, from the Council? Council Kiper?
I just wanna quickly say that I'm thrilled to see that the Splash Pad is finally coming through. Of all the things that happened in twenty twenty, I'm glad this one actually made it through. Um, I'm also thrilled that there will be restrooms outside at the Rec Department. Um, and I'm just, um, I think Amy Gagnon, uh, I can never say that right. Gagnon, she does a great job as a director, uh, Department Director and I feel like the cost of the town for this is um, is, is very reasonable for what, you know, what we're gonna have and um, I'm thrilled she was able to get a matching grant. I think um, it's gonna be a real asset to the town and I'm just thrilled to not have to bring my son to the porta potty at the Rec Department anymore.
So true. Uh, any other comments? Uh, I will just say that um, you know, when we talk about the deliberative session and we talk about um, town elections, it means that um, filing period is coming up, so I
Four seats of the Council.
Wow, yeah.
We had two resignations this year and two seats are up.
It'll be two three-year terms to two-year terms, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Filing period is the twentieth through the twenty-eighth, I believe.
The twentieth through the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
So, um, if there's anybody interested in, I mean, I know we have a couple people who are serving in one-year terms, obviously. Um, and then if there are people who are interested in serving in any of, on any of these, uh, not just the Town Council, but we have, you know, there are seats up on the Planning Board and
Would you like me to read those?
Oh, sure, yes, if you have them.
We have two Town Councils for three-year terms each. Uh, two Town Councils for, uh, each for two-year terms. Three Municipal Budget Committee for three-year terms. Two Municipal Budget Committee members for two-year terms and one Municipal Budget Committee member for one-year term.
Wow.
Yeah. Two Planning Board members for three-year terms, a Town Clerk Tax Collector for a three-year term and one trustee of trust funds for three-year term.
As well as, you know, positions that are, you know, volunteer positions that we have, so um, Council Dumont.
Yeah, I will say as somebody who's been sitting on the Budget Committee for the past three years now, if you are looking for an entry-level way to get into town government and understand what we do and, you know, where, where money is going, how to be impactful, Budget Committee is a good one to get a seat on, so.
Yeah. And if anyone has any questions, um, you know, you, I'm, I will go ahead and speak for all of the councilors. I think you can reach out to any of the councilors um, and then the Town Manager, uh, if you have any questions about any of the positions that um, that are up. Cause uh, you know, town government doesn't, it doesn't work if people don't participate, so. Um, that's all I had and so the next, um, public hearing. Oh, right. Um, so that's the, our next meeting is
We have the public hearing on January nineteenth and a regular meeting on January twentieth.
Okay. Thank you. And that's it. Um, so with no other comments, I will um, consider us adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Happy New Year.
Yeah.
Thank you.